Well, good evening, everybody. This is the city council meeting for the city of Bonny Lake. It is our final city council meeting for the year for December 12th, 2023. The very first thing we always do is salute our flag. So if everybody can stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you call a roll, please?
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLeimans.
Here.
Councilmember Roach. Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Okay, I did, oh. So how would that work with Councilmember Roach, who is a current council member?
Until December 31st.
Until December 31st, and then we go into the new term. Is Councilmember Roach here to be sworn in? Ah!
And neither is Councilmember Baldwin, but they can do that on the side in the future.
Yes, yes, we will manage that at the time.
We need to make a motion to.
Yeah. Yes, so, yeah, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so, all in favor of excusing both Councilmember Roach and...
Just Roach.
That's it, it is Councilmember Roach, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, Councilmember Roach is excused at this time, so we do have an agenda modification. Oh, no, we have a special guest. That's right. If somebody could come into the council chamber, please. Ah, there we are. Well, let's see. He needs someone to help him. I hope you have some coal for Mr. Sandler over there. I know he's been a naughty boy this year.
I do, I do.
That is.
But only for this guy.
Yeah. Well, welcome, Santa.
Thank you.
What brings you here?
You what?
I said, what brings you here?
You.
Oh, well, okay.
You were being naughty.
Yes.
And I thought I'd come over and straighten you out. I don't know. Like, I came in, I thought maybe people would fill up my sack, because it's empty.
Well, we can make arrangements, try to do that. We still have a couple of weeks before Christmas comes along.
Okay, and when the time comes, I'll expect it.
Absolutely.
Underneath your shirt, or you have an ACR tree.
Okay, and I will coordinate with soon-to-be Councilmember Hubler, who's sitting in the, who's sitting in the front row there. She's very good at filling bags up and stockings.
Looks bad.
Well, if anybody would like a picture or a photo opportunity with our special guest over here, we would ask that you go out into the hallway to do so, so we can go forward with council business. And speaking of which, we have an agenda modification. Looks like that the Public Safety Committee has requested for item AB 23152 to be removed from the consent agenda until next year. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of modifying the agenda to remove AB 23152, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, AB 23122 has been moved to next year. And then we also have an agenda modification for a full council issue. That would be AB 23154 to be removed and postponed to January. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor of moving the full council issue of AB 23154, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have unanimous consent on both modifications. Now, we have what was going to be four appointments. I believe we are down to two.
Maybe three now.
Maybe three? Did we have somebody show up?
I've received some texts from Councilmember Baldwin, who is also addressed to Santa, apparently, but is coming up from the bottom of the hills. She should be here shortly.
Bottom of the hill.
We can go to the next.
Yes, we'll just go to the next item, on that, which will be a proclamation. Okay, so, whereas Justin Evans has served on the Bonny Lake City Council since 2015, and Tom Watson has served on the Bonny Lake City Council since 2012, and whereas they exemplify the noble endeavor to leave a place better than when found, and in doing so inspires all of us to do the same by upholding the highest standards of community service, donating their time and effort to making a difference in the lives of others, and whereas Justin Evans and Tom Watson have attended several Bonny Lake business grand openings, volunteered annually at Beautify Bonny Lake, volunteered at several community events, been board members for several county, city, and community organizations, and have strived to put the Bonny Lake community first in their decisions and actions, and whereas the city of Bonny Lake takes great pleasure in honoring Justin Evans and Tom Watson for all of their volunteering in our community and convey our sincere gratitude and appreciation for their committed, selfless, and compassionate efforts, and whereas the entire community can influence positive change with any volunteer action, no matter how big or small, and whereas the city wants to recognize Justin Evans and Tom Watson for all their dedication to our city and all the residents, now, therefore, I, Michael McCullough, mayor of Bonny Lake, with the full backing and encouragement of the entirety of the Bonny Lake City Council by virtue of authority vested in me by the city of Bonny Lake, do hereby proclaim December 12th, 2023 as Make a Difference Day in the city of Bonny Lake, and encourages all citizens to join me in observing this day by connecting with friends, fellow employees, relatives, community groups, and civic groups to engage in projects benefiting and making a difference to the Bonny Lake community. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Bonny Lake to be affixed on this 12th day of December, 2023.
Aye. No surprise, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, not at all.
Mr. Mayor.
I mean, it takes a special person.
I do have something for them, too.
Oh, yes, Madam Clerk.
I have a plaque and a copy of the proclamation.
Here.
I want to thank you guys for all of your hard work, your support.
Beth, thank you very much.
All right. So seeing that there's no public hearing, we'll go on to citizen commentary. This is your time to address the council on city business. The city will now enable the video and microphone for those attending virtually. You will need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and move to the virtual comments afterwards. Anyone who wishes to approach the dais will have five minutes, and please state your name and address for the record.
Councilmember, I'm past Councilmember Dan Decker, 24170, Bonny Lake, Washington. Fluoride. Fluoride is considered a drug by the FDA, and the EPA can find no legitimate reason to put poisonous fluoride in our drinking water. Fluoride does weaken bones and ligaments, causes muscle weakness, and nervous system dysfunction, damage to the brain. Fluoride makes users docile, damages the pineal gland, damages... and not, and can, and does rot your teeth. Geez. Didn't somebody say fluoride is good for your teeth? No, it rots it. Fluoride is a highly toxic drug, causing neurotoxicity. It is more harmful to the brain than mercury and lead. The federal government wants this poisonous fluoride in our drinking water. The most important factor about the container fluoride comes in, it has the word poison, and if you look real close, you'll see a skull and crossbones next to that word. Adolf Hitler learned from his chemists that fluoride, as mentioned, destroys the pineal gland and causes humans to be more easily controlled. Drinking fluoride does kill. There is no safe drinking level for fluoride. Drink it, drink it, drink it, it will kill you. New studies point to fluoride as a cause of autism and type 2 diabetes. Interesting. I recall when I was on the city council, we voted no fluoride in the drinking water. But remember, right, the vote was 7-0 against fluoride. Why is fluoride in our water today? The Tacoma drinking water has contaminated all of the city drinking water with fluoride. Counsel, why do you allow fluoride in the Tacoma drinking water that the city buys from Tacoma? Fluoride is a byproduct. I'm not going to say what else is a byproduct, because I don't want to offend any of the people in the audience tonight, but let's just say we flush the toilet from time to time to get rid of that other byproduct, and they're both the same exact thing: poison. Thank you very much, counsel, and congratulations to those that won their elections, and I hope you guys do a really, really a good job. Some of you I do know, and you do, or I know you will, be very perfect at what you do. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Decker. Is there anybody present for the good of the order? Ah, Mr. Lear.
Well, appreciate the moment, Chris Lear. Glad that you offered such a... That's him. I think it's very easy. The two departing. I would not raise. Lot of effort. Justin, you put your mind. Yeah, I wanted to give you some small gift, which is just a shirt, but from our project. It's a P P shirt. As a appreciation for the level of effort you put into that, I think you're going to change the... Let me say this differently. It's interesting to have the impact in a town where you can see the evolution from your time coming in and going out. And I think that the effort that you guys put in, and the balance of the council as well, put into the east town part of Bonny Lake specifically is exemplary, and I believe that in five, six, seven, eight years, what was done in the council, what was done with the city staff, it will be an incredible positive opportunity for the city to grow in a localized way. With that, I say thank you for all your support and your time and your investment in coming to the grand openings and just being there to offer counsel and Justin's math skills when needed, and I hope the best for you in your future. So with that, I have shirts and also the offer of a beer, B L T, after, if you're interested.
We'll be there.
Beer's on me.
We'll be there. Thank you, Chris. All right, thanks. I, for one, have relied on Councilmember Evans' math skills for the last two years. I don't know what I'm going to do after this. So, now we can move on. I believe Councilmember Baldwin is present. Oh, Councilmember McLeimans.
So, can I speak as a citizen? Is that okay?
Yes, kind of. Yeah.
I would like to come here and speak as a citizen. It's been a pleasure working with Tom and Justin, and I want to thank you both for your service as a citizen, and I want to offer a quick prayer that the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob would bless you and your families always and keep you safe, and that I hope that all those that believe likewise would pray for you, and that you would only find joy each day. Thank you.
Kelly, you've always been a good friend. Thank you. All right, thank you, Councilmember McLeimans. Is there anybody else present for the good of the order? Oh, yes, come on up, Aaron.
Good morning, Mayor, council, and everyone that showed up tonight. My name is Erin Muskie, senior librarian, right across the parking lot at the Bonny Lake Library. I, too, want to say my thanks to outgoing council members and welcome our incoming council members. Having gotten the chance over the past year and a half to work with the city and the council more closely, we have such a gift here in our community, so many organizations that come together to support our citizens, and that has been such a gift to me personally and professionally, so thank you both, and I welcome our incoming council members as well. I did want to give a couple of quick updates about what's going on at the library. You might have seen, or actually, maybe not today through all the fog, we do have a miniature construction site over at the library in our parking lot right now. That is the first steps towards bringing food lockers to the Bonny Lake Library location, and I am just so pleased with that work. I'm so pleased to see it come to fruition. That is through a partnership with the city and also our newly rebranded Good Roots Northwest to center the library as a one-stop shop for people who are wanting access to greater food security in the city. We're going to provide a place for computers, so people can access the beginning steps of signing up and getting themselves, getting all their shopping requests done, all the way through the final step of being able to pick up food at the library. We're so pleased and so excited to see that come. It should be sometime in first quarter of 2024. Right now, with the construction and the weather, timelines get a little bit iffy sometimes, but that is moving forward, and we're really excited about that. And we are starting a second storytime session, beginning on January 9th, when our storytimes return after the holidays. We have had such a positive response with our earliest learners to our storytimes that we outgrew our meeting room. We've had to hold storytimes in the back of the library, so we're adding an additional session on Tuesdays for families to come in and bring their little ones to a storytime. That'll start up on January 9th and go through into the springtime. The final thing I wanted to mention, we do have a new art display up in the children's section. This time, it features art from sixth graders at Mountain View Middle School, and again, our student artwork is phenomenal, so I invite everyone in to come take a look at that. We also are going to be featured at the end of this month in the Washington Library Association's journal for that art display, so we're really excited about that as well. And again, just thank you all for your time and your efforts on behalf of the city, and we invite you all, everyone, to come and visit the library at any point. Thanks.
Thank you, Erin. What time is the storytelling time on Tuesday?
Storytimes are Tuesdays and Thursdays. They start at 10:30 and they run through about 11:15.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anybody else who is present for the good of the order? Okay, we'll now move on to those who are virtual. Anybody who is virtual, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Okay, I believe now would be an appropriate time to disable all video and microphones for those who are attending virtually, and now we can move on to, I believe, why most of y'all are here.
We will have three appointments.
Madam Clerk.
Would Councilmember-elect Hubler, Anne Baldwin, and Councilmember McLeimans, please come to the front of the dais. Mayor McCullough will be giving your oath for your terms that start January 1st of 2024. Mayor McCullough, the floor is yours.
I think the way, I was originally going to do photo ops and everything. I think y'all can stand right here.
And I have to have a picture of Baldwin.
You kept your answer for vacation, didn't you? All right, so, we're not going to, if y'all, okay, just, I'm not going to say the state you name it, state you name. The way we will do this is I will say aye and then oaths. State you name it. Sorry, I think Councilmember McLeimans, just moving that. Okay, so if all of you could raise your right hands, please. Aye, Councilmember McLeimans.
Aye. Hello, Angela Baldwin.
You solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution. You solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
That I faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office of Councilmember.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office of Councilmember.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. Thank you. All right.
And you're in.
I'm not a councilmember, but sure.
I know. I thought you had some big thing planned.
I understand.
Would be nice. Madam Clerk, would it be okay to proceed while you're doing that? Okay, good. All right, next we have committee reports. Can I hear from the Finance Committee, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met tonight, 5 o'clock upstairs. We had a report on personnel updates. We did a discussion on action items, discussion of opioid settlement funds and the Pierce County Health Services. It was about $19,000 that we received, and essentially, we're talking about making a deal to work with other agencies because of the small amount of money to work with them, to kind of come up with something that works for the group, the whole, so Cities of Sumner and that kind of thing, to work together towards...
Every little bit helps.
Yes. We had a discussion item on AB 23156, an agreement with Pierce County, the city of Bonny Lake, to provide senior services reimbursable up to $22,000, $22,758 per year, for the years of 24, 25. This is a grant that we've received, this is the third time. It's a two-year grant, and basically, in whole, it would be, it would go through today, but they haven't received funds yet. Their funds would be received in January, and it would be reimbursable for those things, so. Yeah. And then we adjourn.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor Carter. Can we move on to a Community Development Committee?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, our last Community Development Committee, we had a couple of issues. We discussed, one included the Resolution 3193, which is on your agenda this evening, recommended for approval, which was the 410 Sumner trunk line evaluation. That's the trunk line from basically the top of the hill down towards Sumner, and that's because there could be some upcoming issues that need to be evaluated, so they're going to present some options to future meetings for possible inclusion. And also ordinance for the code and code maintenance ordinance that we're working on at committee level. We do that regularly, but we're still working on that one in committee, so it did not pass out of committee. Those were our items this evening.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Swatman. Could we move to Public Safety Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to start off, there were some audio issues on our recording, so there will be no audio. There is video, but all you do is puppeting around, so refer to the minutes on the rest of it. We did receive reports from East Pierce Fire and Rescue. Their three-year call volume is pretty flat year to year. They did approve their 2024 budget a couple of weeks ago, and in doing so, added two additional daytime medic units. That'll be hitting the streets mid-2024. One is in South Prairie, and one will be out of 111 here in town. That should help their first two in medical calls. They have a hiring spree right now, upwards of 16 personnel looking to start Academy in March, and then they gave us an update on Station 111 across the street. We had a report from Chief Berry over there with the Bonny Lake Police Department. We had a review of the November stats. The police department is working along with the admin here and the school admin with the high school on just some additional security SOPs. We are working with South Sound 911 on online reporting options. They talked about the success of the Coffee with the Cop at Lamp Post and at Target over the last few weeks. We do have three employees in background right now, all entry-level, looking for a potential February start. We had a discussion on the new Pierce County Mental Health Hotline, which is 988, so from any phone, you can call 988 and speak with a mental health provider that, if you're having any issues with that, they can certainly direct you into resources that you may need. We added a report from the prosecutor in November. There were 366 total hearings, 30 arraignments, and 91 pre-trials. In November, there was a review of 29 hours of body cam footage that was sent to defense, and the new drug ordinance that we passed a few months ago, since the state legislator didn't do anything, we've actually have two charges pending with that right now. So that was good news to see that our efforts here for public safety were not for nothing. We had a discussion on AB 23-152, which was pulled from our consent agenda tonight. It will be sent to Public Safety in January and into a workshop the third weekend, the third Tuesday in January. We approved our minutes and we adjourned.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Evans. The 16 new hires, will that be for our area exclusively, or is that...
East Pierce as a whole.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much, and now we will move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, all in favor of adopting the consent agenda for the city council meeting of December 12th, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, let it be known that it was adopted unanimously, and we do, let me just, this is not one of the ones that was pulled, no. Okay, good. We have a Finance Committee issue. Madam Clerk.
This is AB 23156, Resolution 3192. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a reimbursement contract with Pierce County for senior services rendered by the city of Bonny Lake up to a total of $45,516 during calendar years 2024 to 2025.
So moved. Second.
Do we have any discussion on the matter? All right, seeing no discussion, we will move to a vote. All in favor of approving Resolution 3192, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's been adopted unanimously, and we now have, I believe it's only one full council issue at this point, yes. Madam Clerk.
This is AB 23151, Ordinance D 23151. The council motion would be to amend Ordinance Number 1687 relating to salaries and benefits for non-represented employees.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on the matter? All right, hearing no discussion, all in favor of Ordinance of D 23151, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let it be known that that has been adopted unanimously, and I believe 154 was pulled.
It was.
Very good. So, with that, seeing no business, we are adjourned. So, with that, seeing no business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.